Well, hello everyone. Good morning. Tuesday, December 2nd staff meeting. Got a couple of things we're going to talk about. We're gonna turn it over to Tom and Justin here shortly, and then we have Treasurer here to give a quick update on some things. So Tom, take it away.
A couple of issues that shouldn't take too long today. There's a, we have a, Tanya wants to talk about a legislative issue first on a, on a letter that the Commission needs to take a look at and send forward to the state. And then our big discussion day is on redistricting, which legal will handle. So we'll let Tanya go first. Go ahead and go take this a second.
Morning Chairman and Commissioners. So I heard from Jessica, I think a couple of weeks ago, when I haven't had a chance to first meet with you all. But she states that Chairman Thompson with the Senate is going to bring up the remains bill first week of session. And so what I'd like to do is have you review this testimony letter from the Commission, of course, and I will tell you it's very similar to what we sent last year to the House. The only change is we actually updated, and of course, she was, but we've updated the number of boxes of remains and heard from Dr. Stedman that we are now at 600 boxes, nearly 600 boxes. So put this letter together, would like to have you sign off on it if you approve and get it to Jessica so that it is ready to go. And Dr. Stedman also has a letter that she will send out, and then she will be ready to testify in person that week with the Senate Committee. And I think it's Committee on State and Federal affairs. So I just wanted to have that ready. I know it's early, but just again, I want to have a.
It's helpful. Any questions on this? Anybody?
Do we have sample legislation of what?
Of that bill? Yeah, I have it. I can send it to you.
Call. I think we looked at that before and approved it.
Okay, I'll be glad to send it to you.
Any questions on this letter? When are you wanting this thing to go out, Tony?
So, yeah, that's okay. I mean, if there's no hurry really, but I just.
As soon as I can, but there's no hurry. The, I have no, I just, I proof this letter. I have no problems with this letter. Does anybody have any problems with this letter? Not sure how you go with that?
That's great.
Okay. Okay, Tanya, I think we can, we can go on smart. Thanks so much.
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, the, we're going to talk about a particular law involving redistricting. I'm going to call Adrian Clark Assistant County Counselor. She's going to speak first, and then Jack Joseph from GIS is going to talk about some of these issues as well.
Adrian, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Clark, Assistant County Counselor. And as Justin mentioned, I'm here to talk about everyone's favorite hot button issue. Redistricting, or as we might prefer to call it, mid-sentence population review, or mid-census population review. I'm gonna I'm gonna kick it off by talking about the legal background and why this conversation is necessary. And then Jack is going to take over, and he will discuss the review of the 2021 adopted plan. The available data and associated geography that we have looked at in our assessment of whether or not redistricting is necessary at this time. And B O C C district estimates with those numbers kind of plugged in. So first and foremost, why are we here? Why are we bringing this to you? Well, because Kansas statute requires it. K S A's section 19204, there's a big chunk of text, but the operative part is that bolded section at the bottom. Which says such district shall be subject to alteration at least once every three years. Now, we're taking a somewhat liberal and very taxpayer-friendly approach to the definition of subject to alteration. And read that to mean that we at least need to have a discussion. So this discussion here today is to fulfill our statutory obligation. Other legal considerations. So I could get into all of the case law, but I'm just going to leave it at, on multiple occasions, the U.S. Supreme Court has reaffirmed that as long as you're within certain parameters of the population within each district, whether it be at the federal, state, or local level, then you are not violating the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. And that would be a population deviation of up to 10% between districts. So that means that each district can have a population assigned to it of anywhere from 5% below or 5% above whatever that ideal population amount is. And I've included an example here with some clean-cut numbers, just for the sake of further explaining it, which is if the county's population is 500,000, then we'd say each commission district in a perfect world would have 100,000 citizens assigned to it. With that 5% deviation, if each district has a population between 95,000 to 105,000, then it's permissible, and we are not in violation of any federal laws, or a state for that matter. So that's kind of the long and the short of it. And at this point, I'm going to have Jack Joseph come up, and he will do what I consider to be the heavy lifting of going over crunching all the numbers and explaining how we fall within those parameters.
Wonderful.
Just, just to clarify, so we're setting the range. I, I guess I was misinterpreted that. I thought if you were at 110, you were okay, or if you were 90, okay, but really, you've only got a 5% tolerance.
Yes. So you can have, you can have a 10% spread between two districts. So yes, the lowest it could be is 5% below that ideal target population, or up to 5% above that ideal target population. Yeah. Yes.
Good morning. Jack Joseph with G I S. So wanted to start off with just a review of the 2021 adopted plan. The 2020 census population for Sedgwick County was around 523,000. So the target population for each district at that time was 104,000, with that deviation of plus or minus 5% was our target. The adopted plan, they're below, you can see the deviations were at the greatest, which was District 3 is 0.1%. So we were well below even that 1%, which, as you'll see, put us in a very good spot moving forward for the next 10 years from 2020. So this point, we look at what available data and associated geography we have available to do this kind of mid-census population review. So we always look to the U.S. Census Bureau for information first, U.S. Census, and then another program called the American Community Survey. And then we look at local data. The Appraiser's Office tracks new residential structures countywide. And the G I S department tracks and maintains address point locations countywide. So those are kind of the two data sets that we're looking at. Just a brief overview, the difference between the census and the American Community Survey data, if you're unfamiliar. So the U.S. Census Bureau conducts more than 130 different surveys and programs each year, tons of information. So the U.S. Census, main function of that is to provide counts of people for the purpose of congressional portionment. That's done every 10 years. The American Community Survey, primary purpose of this program is to measure the changing in social economic characteristics of the population. Such as education, housing, jobs, all sorts of the demographics, but that does include some population estimates as well. A little bit of the geography. So the U.S. Census Bureau tracks this data through census blocks, which is the smallest area of data aggregation. Census block groups, which are areas of multiple blocks, and then census tracts, which are areas of multiple block groups. So those are the three main geographic areas that they aggregate their information. Again, the U.S. Census is only taken every 10 years, so that's not available to us here at this time. And that is at the block level data, which is the smallest geographic area, which is why during the with that census data, we can get down to that granular, granular level and really get those numbers nice and tight. American Community Survey, there's two different data sets that they put out each year. They provide one-year estimates, which is 12 months of collected survey data for areas of population of 65,000 and over. The pro with that data is it's most current, and it is block-level data. But the con is it is the smallest sample size. And it is the least reliable, and it contains more areas of non-data. It's basically response rates. They also have another data set, which is five-year estimates. So this is 60 months of collected survey data for all areas, and this is released yearly. So the pro of this is it's the largest sample size and the most reliable. But the con, it is that it is the least current, and it is at the tract level data, which is the largest geographic area. So if we look at the most reliable data, which is the American Community Survey five-year estimate, there are some problems with it for our purposes here today. As I said before, it's at the census tract level only. So census tracts cross district boundaries. You can see kind of the, the blue census tracts. There's approximately 22 of them, which contains you know, 90,000 people. We can't split those up. We don't know how much is in one side of that area and the other. It's difficult to, to break that down. Also, as of today, the most current release of this information is 2019 through 2023, which is two years old at this point. So on its own, that's not a reliable source. So we look to local county data. The Central County Appraiser's Office tracks new residential structures. So we can take those structures and look at them geographically and count how many of them, you know, total per B O C C district area. So these new residential structures that the Appraisers provide, they don't capture multi-unit dwellings, so duplexes apartments. You know, a duplex is one structure in their view. So G I S captures individual addressing units. So in the picture on the right there, you can see that those are duplexes, but we have an address for each one of those duplexes. So we can calculate the total addresses for properties with new structures. And see how they fall within each district. And the, the stats there at the bottom kind of shows some distribution countywide. From 2021 to 2025. Yeah.
Okay, so. If somebody, there are some pretty good high-level four-story massive apartments. Is that just one?
So, so that would be, that would be one residential structure in the Appraiser's view. We do our best to have an address for each individual unit within that apartment complex.
So one's built. So Prazer says one thing, but you guys, if it's 50, 50 apartments in that complex, you.
We would have 50 address points.
I'm just two residents or something?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get to that. But yes, but that's, that's where we're going. Yes. So the challenge is how do you, how do we estimate the population of these new residential structures? Again, we look to the U.S. Census Bureau. So the average household size is 2.54. And then we look at the vacancy rates. U.S. Census Bureau has rental vacancy rates that kind of hovers around 1%. And homeowner vacancy rates hover around 7%. So we look at the G I S address points, and we try to pull out which ones are renter occupied and which ones are homeowner occupied. The best way to do that is to look at the physical property address. Compare that to the owner mailing address of that property, which is where the tax bill goes essentially. If those are different, we make the assumption that it's a renter-owned, a rental-occupied property. So we calculate those total address points. We then apply that rental vacancy rate of 1% times the average household size of 2.54, and we come up with an estimated population. The total numbers are there on the right. And then we do the same thing for owner occupied. If the property, the physical address is equal to that owner mailing address, homeowner lives there. So then we do the same thing. We calculate total address points, apply the owner vacancy rate at 7% and the average household size 2.54. Come up with an estimated property growth per district. So in the end, take all this, all these estimates, we have the estimated rental growth, estimated owner growth. Add those two numbers together to get estimated population growth. We take those, we add that to the adopted plan back in 2021. Come up with a estimated current population. We take the total population, estimated population of around 50, 544,000. Divide that by five, and that is our target population per district, which is roughly 108,000 per district, almost 109. We then look at that target difference and the estimated percent deviation from that target. And in the end, we see that the highest deviation is 1.84% from the estimated target. So below 2%. Which is well within the range of that plus or minus 5%, which is what we were going for to begin with. So. That's the overall where the data came from, the general methodology of how we got here, and again, the estimated population of each district. So.
Really interesting data. I appreciate it. I've got a general question, Jack. I don't know if you can even answer this question, but new residential addresses, 8,786 for the entire county in this four-year span, five-year span. What? That, is that good growth? Is that anemic growth? Is that, are we growing in Sedgwick County, or are we just displacing district to district? I mean, I.
Well, so if we go back to, and I just pulled some general numbers. So from 2010 to 2021, based on census data, we grew at roughly 5% over those 10 years. I don't have historic residential structure data here at my fingertips. But that, that was the growth that we saw from 2010 to 2020.
I'm thinking more of a macro level. Are we growing in Sedgwick County? We have to scale things. If we're not growing in Sedgwick County, why are we not growing in Sedgwick County? Why are people leaving Sedgwick County? This is not a, we're talking population estimates, and I'm extrapolating to other things, but my mind starts going to preparing five years, 10 years out. I'm just curious what the state of the population forecast is for Sedgwick County comparative to other places. You can't answer that today, and I'm telling you, I know that. I'm just.
Yeah, forecasting, forecasting does get difficult, and that's, that's kind of why we just look at the hard data that we have available.
Yeah.
Where, what, what things have done in the past and where we are today.
Very good. So, thanks, Jack. Yeah. Other questions?
Sure. Thank you. Just remind me, please, what was the date? What was approximate date we did our redistricting this last time?
Was the end of 2021.
And do we keep data, do we keep data from previous redistricting iterations? Do we have data going backwards? We can look at and find out what, what, what our county demographics were each time we've made changes? Do we have that data somewhere?
So I have 2010 data when we did redistricting. I, I don't have previous data at my, again, at my fingertips.
It is, what are the, what are the criteria we look at specifically when we do, when we redistrict? Is it specifically population only? I know there's a concern that we don't want to split up minority populations because it the theory is it takes away the potential opportunity to have representation specifically. So that's something that's looked at specifically is, is if we split up a population that's concentrated on a minority race, if you will.
Yeah. So back in, when we did the 2020, when we looked at this 2020 census and did the redistricting in 2021. We only looked at population, and we looked at physical barriers, rivers, major roads, that sort of stuff. I know there was a lot of discussion about demographics, but that was not something that was that was put into the population metrics, if that makes sense.
One, one thing I I, I was here, I guess Commissioner Payton, you were in Commissioner Mike's, or was it? Oh, you weren't. Okay. So two of us, seven, five were here. You know, the, Sedgwick County is a very diverse county. I think we have a lot of differences as you go across the county. I, I'm specifically interested in what happened in 1986, because we went from three districts to five. And at that time, we added, so we added two districts. I assume we added districts four and five, basically squeezed them into the county, if you will, and the lines shifted at that point. But it's interesting looking at demographics. You know, you look at the socioeconomic factors of the five districts, as well as the geographic land space. You know, District 5 is only 106 square miles. District 3 is 454 square miles. That's drastically different. So we, we have vastly different priorities because we represent a population that's very, very different, very rural versus very, you know, high density, if you will. And I, I think we look at the, you know, where does money, where are tax dollars paid and where's tax dollars consumed, if you will, in government services? Districts 3 and Districts 1, I think, provide the most tax revenue to the county. Whereas Districts 2 and, Districts 2, 3, and 5 probably have more, more programming, if you will, that's being, providing services to people who have stated needs, if you will. So there are, what I'm saying is our, our districts are different than each other. Socioeconomic, socio-economically, they're different. They're different in terms of landmass. And I guess if I was going to, if I, if I didn't have a map to look at, I started this from scratch, I would have never ended up with the map we have today. I think this is very much, the history has brought us to this point, that we, we didn't, we've made minor changes because it was easy to do that. But I think that going back to 1986, I'm wondering, what are, what are the evidences of gerrymandering? Let me ask you that question. What are the evidences of gerrymandering in the past?
I'm not really sure how to answer your question. Obviously, I was not here in 1986, or the last time we did the census, but I, I will say and Justin looks like he's chomping at the bit to say something here.
Justin, were you here?
I was gonna say, I, I'm the attorney who's been in the office the longest, and it's only been since 2013. I will say that I'm not aware of any successful lawsuits against the county for gerrymandering from 1986 on. That, that said, I'm not aware of everything that happened before I started working here. I will say that we haven't had any lawsuits against the county for that. Certainly no successful claims as well. So I don't know back to 1986, and I'm not sure the rationale behind that. I think we can probably find out for the Commission what was done at the time that, like you're saying, Commissioner, how the two districts were added. But I, I'm not aware of there being any successful claims during that window of time. Again, there's a lot that happened in the 1980s I was not aware of as well, though.
I'll, I'll just state this. I, I'm pretty sure we're not going to do anything right now. So I'll just say, this is, my comments are not suggesting we would, we have started a redistricting effort today. So I'll, I'll put that to bed. But I will just tell you that I'm not happy with how things are currently. I think we, we had an opportunity in 2021 to address some things that are just messed up in Sedgwick County. The districts should look more like each other, and what I'm saying is they're not like each other at all. We have vast differences. And I know that everyone wants to talk about, you know, gerrymandering, saying that there's a political advantage in one district. That we're doing something to help a, help a particular party have more representation. We have five Republicans on the bench today. Which is actually very interesting. You go back, there's been times there's been as many as two Democrats or even three Democrats on this, on this commission. But today we have five Republicans, and people wonder, why is that? It is interesting to me, though, if you look at the partisan breakdown of the county. I'll just make a point here, that District 3 has nearly 50%, right? At 50% Republican registration, half of everybody who lives in District 3 is Republican. And look at District 4 is 34% Republican and 30% Democrat. So it's very, almost, almost even, if you will. Why is that? Well, it's interesting. If you were to try to peanut butter that registration across the five districts, you need to move people from Republicans from District 3 into Districts 2 and Police Districts 2, 3, and 5. So what I, what I, what I was trying to do in 2021, I had two maps available. And what they tried to do is essentially shift people from District 3 into Districts 2 and 4 specifically, trying to even out some of that partisan issue, but as well as the urban rural issue. It was twofold. It would make the districts more like each other, is what it would have done. And those two maps, I spent quite a bit of time on it. Thank you for your work, Mr. Joseph, for the, all the work that you did on making those maps available. But the redistricting committee that we employed at that time, or we, we put them, we empowered them essentially to look at our maps. They literally had zero discussion, zero debate, no presentation. No dialogue whatsoever about why those maps were provided to them as a consideration. They immediately made a motion. They opened up the, the floor, they opened up their meeting. The very first thing that was said was, I make a motion to get rid of those two maps. Without explanation, they immediately removed those two maps from consideration. I, and I find that appalling. So at the end of the day, there are things that need to be addressed, but we as Commissioners did not have a chance to actually be heard. And I think that we as elected officials should have been heard. That process was flawed. And we ended up with a very good map, by the way. The, the numbers were amazingly close. We adopted that map. I mean, the numbers were, it was close to zeros you could ever expect. They did a good job in terms of population, but they did not address the other concerns I have about geographic landmass, the partisan breakdown, and the socioeconomic factors that frankly are a big problem in Sedgwick County. You wonder why the money is, no offense to anybody here, but you wonder why things are spent in one district and not another district. Well, it comes back to some of these, some of these issues. And I think you look at South Wichita, for example. I think South Wichita has had, has been neglected for, for decades. You know what? It goes back to this. This is partly why I think that South Wichita has a, has been, has not received as much investment, if you will, as you see in the far east and far west sides of Sedgwick County. So I, I think we have an opportunity to actually address some of this, not to gerrymander it in favor of Republicans. That's not even, not my point. But to fix a problem that was created back in 1986. It was gerrymandered. And we still have a gerrymandered map today, and we could have fixed it. And we, we chose not to even have a discussion. We didn't even, we didn't even, we did not even talk about it. So today, we have a messed up map, and politically, and how we operate this county has had detrimental impact. Because we did not, we did not fix a problem that was created back in 1986. So I'll just state that. That's my speech. Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. How. Yeah, but history is interesting indeed. I always thought I had heard. I'd heard, so I wasn't around 86 either, but, but I'd heard that the intent was, has always been. I'd heard, so I wasn't around eighty-six either, but, but I'd heard that the intent was, has always been for each commissioner to kind of pie shape, have a piece of downtown. Which I've always thought that was a little weird coming from the city. That's, that's not the case. It's, so as we get into, I guess it'd be five years from now, we're gonna have to do this officially. It, it, it could be a way to just upset that whole apple cart, as you're saying, start over, take a, a real broad look at it, especially since Bioscience Center will be up and running, uh, there'll be massive amounts of apartments downtown. So there could be a real shift in, you know, we've talked before about this, they're just a downtown district, countywide and then all the others. But those are good discussions and, and, uh, because I always thought it is weird, but I just think I reach out a little on you.
Really strange, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, so they are strange. I, I agree with you. It's kind of, we, we made, but that's a, that's a future discussion, but I think, I think today.
And by the way, this doesn't affect, this does not affect my current term or my next term, should I get reelected? Has nothing to do with me at all, but I would just simply say, when the county goes to seven districts or six, by the way, there's option for six or seven. That's a great discussion to have. Um, we have a chance to basically flush this map and start over, and that's what needs to happen here. I think I would just take this map and say, let's start this process completely over again because it is, is a messed up map, and it has, it has, has detrimental impact to parts of our county, and we, we need to fix it. And again, rather than saying this is a, you know, Jim Howell trying to be a partisan and trying to fix Republican, no, we have five Republicans now, that's not the point. It is a, it's messed up on policy. How we spend money in this county is, is impacted by the fact that we have the districts set the way they are, and no offense to any of my colleagues, I love you all. But the, the, but the allegiance towards Northwest Expressway is a great example. I frankly don't care about it, and two of my colleagues love it. And, you know, it's, it's in your district. If I was in your, in your shoes, I probably would love it too. But why is that? And then we're talking potentially a billion-dollar project here, but maybe multi-billion dollar project. My point is the allegiance about that and the investment in that, or talk about Central County Park or Central County Zoo, the investment, or, or NIR, uh, NCAP. Um, those are, those, those investment histories goes back to this map, I think. I was incredibly disappointed if the W A T C, or I should say, uh, WSU Tech chose to remove their one site from the, the area of Dover on Forty-seventh Street, which really served the people who were walking there from Oakland. They moved it, moved it over to Harry Street. Now they can't get there. That's the type of decisions that are being made that, in my opinion, are, you know, the, my opinion are detrimental to the, the fairness of how we, how we, uh, dole out services to this county. We do have a lot of services from the sheriff because we have a lot of calls down, down south. Okay, that's just the way it works. Um, but in terms of investment, you know, we just, we just had a beautiful, uh, ribbon cutting over at the Central County Park for the exercise, uh, I forget what we call that now, but the exercise, uh, opportunity for the older folks at sixty-five and over, great investment. Honestly, I wish that would have been in District Five or District Two, or even in District Four. It, it ended up in District Three, and again, I just wish that that conversation would say, when we have opportunities to spend money like that, we ought to be having a discussion about where should that go in Central County? And we need to look at a way to create, if you will, a, a greater level of fairness. It's just not, I, I, I think this bad map has impacted Central County detrimentally for many decades, and we had a chance to fix it. We have a chance to fix it next time we do this. I would really encourage us to maybe get the commissioners involved, let's have some real discussion by elected officials, and let's get some maps that actually addresses the inequities that currently exist, we didn't even, didn't even have a discussion about chance to fix those problems. We should have fixed them in, in twenty twenty-one, and we honestly didn't, the process was flawed. The commissioners were not asked to weigh in at all, and these things I'm concerned about as a, as a representative of my district never even got a sentence in front of that committee. So we can do better. We need to, we need to fix these maps, not today. But when we do this again, I would encourage us to do a much better process. Get the elected officials involved, consider seven districts or six districts, that's what we have to do. Flush the maps and start, start over. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I, I did want to note, just, just for clarity, the, the, and it was on the first slide, the, the task that you have in redistricting under the statute, and this fits into federal law or state law as well, is to make the districts as compact and equal in population as possible. And I, I think in, in the last redistricting that was done, um, and I'd look to Adrian, but I don't think there's any questions or concerns legally about the districts as they stand today as to whether they're compact and equal in population. They are well within the ranges that have been specified, uh, they're compact. I also did want to know, Commissioner Meister, you were asking about, um, options in terms of how you could have the districts set up. I believe, and Jack would be the one who'd be the subject matter expert on this, but I think of, of the options considered, uh, when this, we last redistricted, there was a map that had that option, and that is certain, there's a way to do that, where the board could do that, um, in any potential redistricting. Uh, but I also do think it might be advisable if you're going to consider a change, and I think this is in line with what Commissioner Howell was saying, to have actual census data before you do a substantial change, because everything we're talking about today are estimates, that the best estimates we have with data that we have now. Uh, but when you have new census data in twenty thirty, uh, that'll give us better data to use for any potential redistricting, because at this point, it's just our approximation of what's changed as opposed to hard data from a census.
Thanks, Mr. Meister.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it does come down to, to a theory, um, you know, when you look at the city council districts, there's a lot of frustration from the previous council member that was in Northwest Wichita, because he didn't touch downtown anywhere. And he wanted to have the map redefined, um. Commissioner Meister, you were in that same situation when you served on the council, you were isolated from downtown. So, um, I, I, I think it's just a theory about trying to have it pinpointed, where he, 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 in Northwest Wichita, he felt like, you know, he was excluded from those decisions, he, he didn't, he didn't have the same say in it, so there was a lot of frustration on that. Um, at the same time, Commissioner Howell, I understand your feelings. You know, you may not be as excited about the Northwest Expressway, but the rest of this body may not be as excited about Arc ninety-five as what you and, you and I are, so I, I, I think it, you know, we're gonna end up with some of these obstacles no matter how we look at it, but, um, I mean, I'm, I'm open to the discussion.
Good, yeah, it's good. That's a discussion we'll have in twenty thirty, right?
Well, um, so, the statute says three years, so technically, we won't have the census data until two times from now. Mm-hmm.
But we'll take another peek at this population in three years, is what you're saying.
And Chairman, to clarify my comment, it wasn't to say don't look at it in the meantime, because as Adrian mentioned, there's that statute, but I think if you would make wholesale changes, uh, it would probably be more appropriate to do it based on census data, uh, just better data.
Okay, so, three years, Tim. You'll be watching. Okay, any other questions here? Adrian, thanks. Really appreciate all the work, everybody. Jack, thank you so much. This is a lot. This is really, really interesting, so we appreciate the work done on this. Okay, Tom, that's two official business items. Uh, last one, is it okay if we hear from our treasurer, Brandy Bailey? People got some mail this last week, and I think she wants to give us some update.
Morning Commissioners, Brandy Bailey County Treasurer. So yes, people got mail starting Saturday, and, um, we mailed out a little over two hundred and fifty-five thousand tax bills. And we mailed out a tax roll of nine hundred and seventeen million, one hundred and three, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So, um, to date through the twenty-sixth, we've collected about fourteen million, so we've collected two percent through the twenty-sixth of November. And we are down there actively processing payments. Um, we have received a lot of phone calls about why my tax bill is so high. Um, last year's tax roll was eight hundred, approximately eight hundred and fifty-five million dollars, so we have a, about sixty-two million, sixty-three million dollar increase in the tax roll. Um, so, S S valuation has gone up, even though mill levies have dropped, um, people's tax bills are still a little higher, and, um.
What's that total tax roll again, did you say, for this year?
Nine hundred and seventeen million, one hundred and three, three sixty-four.
Thank you.
That's across all, that's not just Central County, so that's important to note, that that is not just Central County tax.
You know offhand, how many taxing jurisdictions are you distributing these tax revenues to? Do you know?
Hundred and, hundred and three.
Hundred and three.
Yes, approximately, yes, because some townships or some municipality districts, some years they'll, they'll, um, tax, other years they won't levy a tax.
Wow.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, again, I, I, I really do appreciate the, the notification, although, uh, we get a lot of, uh, angry property tax owner, property owners, when they see these, these notices come out. And, and there's a lot of people who don't understand what they're reading again, so I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the three forms we send out every year. The appraisal notification, um, this tax bill, and then we have the, um, R and R notification that goes out. And I, I would like it so that, and this is, I made a request, I just want my colleagues to know, Commissioner Meister and I discussed this yesterday a little bit. And I'm, I'm, I'm interested in seeing these forms available by, by PIN number or by parcel. I was on the map, you click a, uh, click a parcel on the map or whatever. You could pop up and find these three documents for that without the names added. Okay, I, I don't think, I know there's concerns about, there's a, a protected list without the names, but again, simply just look at the, you know, geography, there's a, there's an address, there's, there's a parcel on the map, you should be able to click that, see the taxing jurisdictions for that parcel, and what are the tax realities for that parcel?
Right.
And so these forms that are not personalized, not with the name on it, but that are directed towards that property, what jurisdictions is it in, what's the value of that property? What's the tax, tax, uh, levy for that property would be really great data, so my, my desire is for more, more data to be available. Um, it, it might be as simple as, you know, editing out the names and then doing a PDF, uh, you know, print these to PDFs, make them available by by PIN number or something like that, so I'm hoping we can solve this problem at some point.
So, um, I will say though, since I've come on, I've worked with, um, I've been working with Kelly Arnold, her clerk, and, and the appraiser's office, I would really like to see a one-stop shop for our citizens, so that way it does have all that data in there, including not just the tax information, but even if you clicked on that and you could log in possibly, and you could see your deed, so, so that's something that I've been working on, is how do we get to a one-stop shop for everybody to see data?
And, and I appreciate the deed issue, but I would, I don't want that to slow down the option to get access to these documents, because I think these documents are, you know, we talk to people on the phone about their taxes, they get mad about, I always say, well, I always ask them a question, and they always like, I was always saying, I have no idea, they don't, they don't understand the data, they don't have the details in front of them, because they, they, they threw it away or what, they didn't have it in front of them, but end of the day, when we talk about taxes, it's important to have all the jurisdiction information on there.
And, and to be clear, you can get on now if you put a parcel in or an ID, and you can see the mill levies per taxing jurisdiction, but you can't get
You can't get the
That breakdown on the tax bill, correct?
Correct.
I'm glad she's going there because I have, I have, uh, see if I'm right.
Roll up.
Is that, is that current?
So, uh, I don't know that we have uploaded it for this year yet.
It's still twenty twenty-four.
So it's twenty twenty-four tax year for the twenty twenty-five budget. We'll get the, the updated figures soon.
Can you clarify real quick? Did you go through Treasure, or where did you go through G I S?
Get to this through the clerk's office site or through the finance division site. And you can click on that, you can type in an address, and it will pull up your, this is the current tax report, there's historical tax reports, you can see it's broken down by jurisdiction. And then you can see down below that you can actually see how the counties' dollars are allocated to the different divisions based on the dollars that are paid to the county above. So this is information that's already out there that shows.
This might actually be good information to put on the property tax website on the treasurer's site, where you can go see your property tax bill, and then it links it so they can click on there and directly go.
I think that's the challenge, is I've always accessed it through the treasurer's link and not, this is, yeah, this is, but this is what we're looking for, yeah.
In the, in the past, this has usually been a, a year, a year kind of date, so.
So we, we do this once the finalized budget information is together, Lori, and we'll go in and calculate, um, the county information anytime now and send it to Jack, and then Jack will get this loaded to G I S, so it'll be active for the current, for the twenty twenty-five tax bill that's going out now to support the twenty twenty-six budget.
And the historic page will also show the current year. If I want to be able to see year over year, what jurisdiction changed my taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, very good. Tommy's really taking care of you, isn't he?
There's a little bit of information that's available in this that's not on there, but, but for the most part, that is, that is, uh, that's very useful. Again, is there a place to get the R and R data online? I don't know that there is.
I don't know that there is a spot online, unless the clerk has it on his side, but I don't know that.
Um, so, uh, the R and R information was actually something that, uh, we just asked communications to take down. Uh, from this last version, uh, the, the information in the, that we had posted because we thought it would be, well, I thought it would be confusing for folks to see the R and R with the proposed rates versus what really happened, even for other governments that may have adopted what was recommended, because after that technical adjustment, there is a change in the assessed value and the mill levy rate. So, um, if that is something that the commission wants us to put back up on the budget page, I'm certain we can figure out a way to do that.
I think, I think more is usually better. I would probably prefer that, and then, I guess, and then finally, just again, and just a passing comment, I, I don't think they have an answer yet, but our desire was also to, to, to put on the WSU one point five mill mill levy as a separate line item on the, on this form, as well as, I would like to see the aging mill levy put mention on this, because it was a voter-approved ballot measure that is a property tax-based obligation, if you will, for, for senior programming, so.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see those two things potentially added on there, and, again, I'm not sure that we have an answer yet, but it, it at least is a request.
Right, and those discussions, I know there, there are emails floating around with those discussions right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Meister.
I have an easy question. Is there any reason why you send this out and then it's the day before Giving Tuesday? That intention?
Um, so we get the tax roll on October first, and then when, after we do all of our processes and we get it off to mail services, then they get it mailed out, so, yeah, unfortunately. It's just a way to give back to us, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Brandy, that's helpful. Appreciate that. Any other questions, things we've worked on today? Okay, tomorrow morning, nine AM. See you then. Have a good day.